Well, I would like everyone to join me in welcoming Associate Justice Joshua Groban to the first meeting, the inaugural meeting of the 2020-2021 Board of Trustees. Justice Groban began serving on the California Supreme Court in January of 2019. Prior to that, he was a senior advisor to Governor Jerry Brown and advised the governor on judicial appointments, legal policy, and legislative issues. He received numerous awards from bar groups and other legal organizations for his work on judicial appointments, having advised Governor Brown on the appointment of more than 600 judges. I know additionally that he worked closely with our Jenny Commission as well as our Council on Access and Fairness in some of that work on the appointment of judges. We thank him for that. This is Justice Groban's second time doing the Board the honor of performing the swearing-in of new members and officers of the Board. He joined us this time last year for the swearing-in of new trustees. With that, I want to thank Justice Groban for joining us once again and turn it over to him for the swearing-in.
Donna, thanks for the kind words. Prior to swearing you in, I've been asked to give a few remarks, and though they'll be few, I'm delighted to do it. First and principally, I want to say congratulations to each of you and your families. I recognize that managing the admissions discipline and regulatory system for more than 250,000 lawyers can be a huge and sometimes thankless undertaking. And to do it amidst a massive global pandemic, great social unrest, incredible economic uncertainty, and the most contentious election cycle in our lifetimes is perhaps beyond the call of duty, but you have nonetheless answered the call, and we are grateful. I know firsthand that just one of the issues you're now grappling with, which is the administration of the bar during the COVID pandemic, has presented countless challenges, and that's just one facet of your broad charge, one that also includes everything from attorney discipline to access to justice issues, judicial diversity initiatives, fiscal and operational management of the bar, elimination of bias, the state bar fee bill, and lawyer referral services. The undertaking is immense and important, but you are the right people for the job: dedicated, experienced, committed, and wise. As I compose my thoughts for today, I could not escape from the thought that Justice Ginsburg, as we speak, lies in state at the Capitol, the first woman to do so in our country's history. So I wanted to pause and make a few remarks about that. I should first say that some of my thoughts borrow from an article written in the publication "The Forward," authored by Molly Conway. Because Justice Ginsburg, like me, is Jewish, and because she passed on Rosh Hashanah, which is the Jewish New Year, many have been using a traditional Jewish saying to memorialize her death: "May her memory be a blessing." That's true, but I wanted to add a bit of perspective about what that means. Jewish tradition, by and large, does not focus on the afterlife. We don't have much of a developed sense of heaven and hell. So when Jews speak of right and wrong, it is not really about the idea of getting into heaven. We are supposed to work to be good people because justice is its own reward. We don't know what happens next, but we know what happens here, and that is enough. One of the themes of Rosh Hashanah suggests that very righteous people die at the end of the year because they were needed until the very end. Those who die on the New Year holiday are considered a sadiq, a title given to the righteous. And some of you may recognize that word because it comes from the Hebrew word "sadaka," which is often translated as charity, but is more accurately defined as righteousness. In the Torah, in one of the most famous passages, we are strongly enjoined: "Justice, justice thou shalt pursue." Rabbinical commentators have said that the repetition of the word "justice" is designed to underline the importance of the command. Sadaka is not really charity in the sense of being an act of kindness. Instead, it is given as an act of redress as part of the process of seeking a just world. So when we say someone like Justice Ginsburg was a sadiq, we don't mean she was a good person; we mean she was righteous, that she was a person who committed herself to equal justice under the law. And when we say "may her memory be a blessing," the blessing we speak of is not "may we remember her fondly." The blessing is this: "May you be like Justice Ginsburg." Jewish thought teaches us that when a person dies, it is up to those who bear her memory to keep her goodness alive. We do this by remembering her; we do this by speaking her name; we do this by carrying on her legacy; we do this by continuing to pursue justice. As I suggested at the outset, the work you do for the state bar is at the core of these fundamental principles: justice for all under the law. And I suggest that you use the memory of Justice Ginsburg or anyone else who you admire that embodied these fundamental principles to inspire you. May her memory be a blessing for each of you in the work you do here for the bar, in your own workplaces, and in your homes. Congratulations on this important achievement, and good luck. I think the next order of business is to swear you in, which is always a happy privilege for me. I'll take, I think the plan is to take you in turn, starting with Sean. So Sean, if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Sean Selig.
I, Sean Selig.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Ganong, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to start with, we're going to, next to Mr. Duran. Mr. Duran, if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Reuben Duran.
I, Reuben Duran.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We'll now swear together Ms. Ganong, Ms. Chen, and Mr. Sowell Jr. If each of you could unmute your microphones and raise your right hand and repeat after I state your name.
I, Highland Chen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations to each of you.
Justice Groban, I want to thank you so much. This has been a year of firsts. This is probably the first time the state bar has ever administered the oath of office virtually. We hope to see you next year, and we hope to see you in person next year, and we hope you will consider that, our invitation, seriously. So thank you so much for being here today with us.
It was a pleasure. I was delighted to participate. Sarah, always nice to see you again. Nice to see and congratulate each of you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to bring all the board members online now and call our board meeting to order. All right, Sarah, we're going to note the meeting is commencing at 10:18, and when you are ready, please call the roll.
Bratton.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Cisneros.
Here.
De La Cruz.
Here.
Dellen.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Ganong.
Here.
I believe that Iglesias and LeBron are not here today. Pertula.
Here.
Sewell.
Here.
Stallings.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Good morning, and welcome to the first meeting of our 2020-21 Board of Trustees I'm going to start with the chair report today. Then we will take a break and continue with public comment, public comment, and the rest of our agenda. I'm honored to serve as your chair for the upcoming year. I want to congratulate Reuben for being named vice chair, to Highland Chen for being named to a second term on the Board of Trustees, and welcome our newest board members Christine Ganong and Arnie Sewell. We look forward to having a good year with you. I'm here in the boardroom today at 180 Howard Street in San Francisco, rather than at home or on video, as has become the new normal. I look forward to the time when we can resume our in-person meetings, and I especially look forward to welcoming our new colleagues, Christine and Arnie, in person and shaking your hand. As Alan said yesterday, one of the reasons this board works well is the mutual respect we show for each other and our differing views. That has continued, to be sure, as we have conducted our meetings by video, but nothing is quite like seeing each other face to face. Unfortunately, I anticipate that we are not likely to return to in-person meetings until, at the earliest, our planning meeting in January. Our next regular meeting in November is also likely to be by video. Stay tuned, no pun intended, for updates. Needless to say, our video meetings are just one example of why 2020 has not been and will not be a typical year. COVID is going to continue to impact all of our lives and state bar operations for the foreseeable future. I want to thank all of our state bar staff who have kept this organization running at all levels during this difficult period, from every function, from board support to running the call center, adapting virtually overnight to wide-scale remote operations and telecommuting without missing a beat. Before talking about the issues and challenges we face as a board in the coming year, I want to pause on what it means to me to serve as your chair. We all come to the board through different paths and bring different life expectations, different life experiences, and areas of expertise to our service here. For me, part of my path was spending much of my legal career working in the field of legal ethics, including many years on the State Bar Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct. Acting as chair of the State Bar Board and participating not only in the formulation of professional standards, but their enforcement, is especially meaningful to me for that reason. We talk often here at the state bar about lawyers' role in providing access to justice. Equally important is the profession's role in furthering the rule of law, something that has never been as important as at this time in our history. Part of living under the rule of law is that we lawyers must live up to high standards, and the state bar's role in assisting the Supreme Court in enforcing those standards is something of which we should be proud. But perhaps even more meaningful to me is to take office as only the second openly LGBT leader of this, of this organization in its more than 90 years of existence. For all the years I have been involved at State Bar, it was not lost on me that a number of openly LGBT people served on the board but were never quite able to make the final step to becoming chair, or, as this office was formerly known, president of the state bar. That barrier was broken just a few years ago when Michael Colentono was elected president of the bar, and I'm glad to follow in his footsteps today as chair, not elected by the board but appointed by the Supreme Court as part of our recent reforms. These milestones are important to the LGBT community, my community, but even more importantly to the state bar's role in advancing diversity and inclusion in the profession. We can't talk the talk if we don't walk the walk. Thinking back to when I was in law school, I certainly never thought I would find my way to a position like this as an openly gay man. And that was even though I knew back then how much easier I had it been, earlier generations of LGBT people. Let me tell you one story about that, a story about change for the better over generations. When I was in college in the late 1980s, I was fortunate to get to know Judge Rand Schrader of Los Angeles, who was one of the first openly gay judges ever appointed in the United States. My mother, who's watching now on Zoom, worked for Judge Schrader, and that is how I got to know him. I have never forgotten hearing Judge Schrader talk to a group of law students in the 1980s. He explained that in the early 1970s, his professors at the UCLA School of Law warned him not to let the state bar find out that he was gay. Otherwise, they said, he might be denied admission to practice on grounds of bad moral character. Think for a moment how absurd this seems today, but it wasn't back then. We cannot take this change for the better for granted and must reflect on how far we've come from time, and reflecting on how far we've come from time to time is important to maintaining and continuing progress in equal treatment for all under the law. How I wish Judge Schrader were still with us today to see me sworn in as the chair of the Board of Trustees. Unfortunately, we lost him to the AIDS epidemic some 20 years ago, but I know he is here in spirit and applauding the dramatic changes for LGBT people that have taken place since he began his legal career back in the 1970s. Now, on to the business at hand for our board and to talk a bit about what we have in store for us in this upcoming year. As you know, the state bar, and as Justice Groban discussed, the state bar is about to administer the first online version of the California bar examination ever given. As is the case with so many things in this age of COVID, the state bar had to take this, undertake this massive task unexpectedly. Our staff has been working hard to make this formidable effort go as smoothly as possible. They are working to make the best of a difficult situation, and we are incredibly grateful for all of their efforts. The exam is now only about 10 days away, and we are looking forward to a successful execution of this unprecedented task. While we hope and strive for perfection, we have to expect some hiccups and deal with them as they arise. In this regard, regarding the bar exam, I want to especially thank trustee Josh Pertula, who has led a working group of board members and staff who have put systematic thought and effort into attempting to make this most unusual administration of the bar exam as uneventful as it possibly can be. In another COVID-driven emergency effort, trustee Highland Chen stepped up to the plate to lead the formulation of a provisional licensing rule that the board approved yesterday for submission to the Supreme Court. This is another way we are addressing the disruption that COVID has caused to all of our lives, and in particular to our usual licensing processes for new lawyers. Now, in addition to these special efforts to handle licensing operations during the pandemic, we have underway a number of policy studies and new ones planned for the coming year, and I want to just touch on those briefly. One initiative is already underway. The paraprofessional working group is studying whether and how we might increase access to justice for Californians by licensing non-lawyers to practice law in certain areas at a lower cost to consumers. Thanks to trustee Chris Iglesias for spearheading that effort, which he reported on yesterday. On a similar tack of improving access to justice, the closing the Justice Gap Working Group will be looking in a very broad way at what other measures can be taken to reduce the justice gap, including innovative technical solutions to providing legal advice and assistance to consumers. As those of you who are continuing on the board will remember, this board elected to charter this group with a broad mission that requires broad and visionary thinking. Another initiative we began yesterday was the formation of an ad hoc commission to study the discipline system. Among other things, that group will investigate reforms to address the racial disparity that the state bar discovered by initiating a study into our discipline system on the bar zone initiative. And that disparity was for blackmail attorneys, and the board is committed to eliminating it. More broadly, this group will review a range of reforms, some already implemented and some still to be identified and considered, that will improve the system's effectiveness in both protecting the public and returning lawyers who have committed misconduct to a productive path. This new commission reflects the deepened commitment of the Board of Trustees to focusing on the state bar's core regulatory admission, mission of admitting and disciplining and regulating lawyers. The discipline system has not been systematically studied in this comprehensive fashion since the state bar court was formed more than 30 years ago. This effort is the natural evolution of a deep dive into the discipline system that the board, its Regulation and Discipline Committee, and the Office of Chief Trial Counsel have been undertaking in recent years. So we have an ambitious year ahead of us on all of these special products, projects, in addition to our usual responsibilities of managing the state bar. To that end, when we return from our break in a few minutes, I will ask you to approve committee and leadership assignments for the coming year. Anticipating that, I want to thank the trustees who will lead our standing committees, subject to your approval, during the coming year. Brandon Stallings will continue as rad chair for a second year, bringing continuity to that important role. Highland Chen will join him as vice chair. Josh Pertula will take the reins of the Finance Committee, joined by Jose Cisneros as vice chair. I know they will be a great team. And Sonia Dellen will, if you agree, serve as chair of our Audit Committee. I know we will be in good hands with her in charge of that important function, and thank her for her willingness to serve. In closing, I look forward to continuing to work with you and our staff on reforming the state bar and furthering its service to the people of California. Let's now take a break for about 14 minutes, and we will return at 10:45 to continue to begin with public comment and complete our open session and closed session agendas. to continue to begin with public comment and complete our open session and closed session agendas.
Okay, I'm not sure I actually have a mic.
You do, and it's working.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. I know there's been a lot of focus on diploma privilege and the challenges with the upcoming online bar. I graduated in 2018. I am a parent. I am ready to pass the bar exam. This is my third attempt. And I very much hope that you will seriously consider the Open Book recommendation from many of the deans of the law school. And that's all I have to say, because the remote proctoring has been so far disaster. I very much hope that you'll seriously consider losing the remote proctoring ongoing Open Book, so that those of us who are ready to pass can pass without the technical challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who will be speaking is Sinaz Nick Bocch. Once your mic is available to you, you'll unmute it, and then you have three minutes.
Hi, I would like to first congratulate the newly appointed members of the state bar in hopes that decisions can be made to alleviate some of the struggles that bar applicants are, well, for me personally, that I am having with the bar exam. Just to give you some personal history, I took the February 2020 bar exam, and I did receive a passing score based on the new lower cut score. And since then, with the pandemic, a lot of issues have arisen that has made it very difficult for me, as well as, I believe, a lot of the bar taking applicants to take the bar exam. My schools are closed. I have two children at home that are doing online studying. So, not only am I a full-time employee, but I've also been promoted to an elementary school teacher, as well as my husband being home every day. It makes it very difficult to study again for the October 2020 bar exam that is online. As far as with the online bar exam, I've been had, I still have not gotten any information from Examsoft or the bar exam about how to download the mock exams, because I applied to take the test in person, because I don't have a quiet place to take the exam. That now they're working on getting me laptop permission, where I'll have to stay in quarantine after taking the bar exam, because if I've been potentially exposed to COVID, I can't come home because of, you know, being scared of passing it along to my elder parents. And these are real struggles that I'm having with this current platform. I appreciate the committee offering the online exam, but it's not very possible for me in the position that I'm currently in. And I would bet, and I would hope that we can do something to help applicants that are situated in the same position that I am.
You have 30 seconds remaining, thank you.
That we took the bar exam in the same year that the passage rate was lowered, and I have to now take the test in October to get that same score with all of these issues in hand. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Savannah Wadsworth. Ms. Wadsworth, do you have a microphone available to you? And now that it's unmuted, you have three minutes?
Good afternoon, good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. So, I also wanted to raise some concerns that have been raised a couple of times to phone calls to the state bar and to Examsoft. The major issue that I had was being able to answer the questions in the mock exam. And we're, we've all been concerned with wasting time with the faulty software, like having to scroll through the question for the performance test, definitely a waste of time, considering we only have an hour and a half. And for the multiple choice questions, I had trouble actually clicking on questions. And I'm just, I'm genuinely concerned that if issues like that happen on the day of the exam, where we're wasting time with the software issues, we're going to end up failing because of the software issues and because Examsoft doesn't have the customer service, the enough customer service available in order to answer the questions. And when I did call the state bar, a very nice man did tell me, you know, that Examsoft would be hiring more people. But the problem with that is if they have not been trained to handle the type of software issues that we're having, they're not really going to be able to help us regardless. And I'm not too confident in Examsoft's assurances, considering they assure that there wouldn't be any kind of breaches with people's information. And as we know, a lot of people's private information has been leaked out to the public. People are getting their bank accounts breached, PayPal accounts breached, private accounts. You know, it's definitely a security concern, considering all we want to do is become attorneys. This shouldn't be a condition of being in, of wanting to be in a position to help the public. And honestly, I'm not too sure that them hiring new people, if they actually do end up hiring enough people, is going to help us on the day of the exam. So, that's... I, uh, you know.
You have 30 seconds, thank you.
So I've taken open book exams before and you still have to know the material. Regardless, it's still going to be a test of, you know, our ability to take the bar exam. That option just seems like the best considering the circumstances. If anything changes at the last minute, please don't postpone it to February. And please don't put us in a situation where people will end up committing suicide because of the amount of stress that you guys are putting us under just because of this exam software. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Wadsworth. Next speaker will be Pamela. Pamela, your microphone is not yet available to you. I see it now and it needs to be unmuted. Once it's unmuted, you have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, hi, um, I, I want, I, I wanted to echo what the two previous speakers said. I, I want them to know and we, I want you guys to know that they're not alone. And these issues are being faced by every single applicant who is taking this exam in October. First of all, the state bar unfortunately is not on the same page as Examsoft. For example, the state bar sent us an email yesterday saying that the update to Examsoft is available today, the 25th, and you can download it. And then Examsoft today is no, State Bar should not have sent that, sent out that email. The, 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 the update is going to be available on the 28th. And this is not the only instance where the state bar and Examsoft have not been on the same page. And as far as State Bar just referring literally everything to Examsoft, such as saying that, oh, they'll take care of it, like on, on the day of the exam, they'll have more customer, you know, representatives. How, how many are they gonna have? Had, there are thousands of, of test takers on October 5th and October 6th. I called Examsoft because I needed to re-download the Examsoft. I called them at 4:45 in the morning last week and at 4:45 in the morning, took me an hour to speak to an agent. And just, just imagine what it's going to be like on the test day. But the most important reason I've called today is to push for retroactivity. According to the data that I looked at, the, the people who are eligible for retroactivity that have taken the test and are eligible under the new cut score, they're in the hundreds. They're, they're not a lot of people. Fairness and equity demand that you ask the Supreme Court. You have the position that retroactivity do apply to these applicants. At least some of us can go into the workforce and help the community. Just like the first speaker said, everyone is going through hell right now. I, I, I lost my full-time job and I've been, it's been cut to less than one-fourth.
You have 30 seconds left, thank you.
I, I just want you guys to please take an action. We've been calling for months now. This is not my first time calling. I feel like State Bar is not taking any action. They only refer things, oh, the Supreme Court decided this, that's it, we're not going to do anything. Please push for retroactively, please rethink this online bar and, and try to come up with a solid plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be a name that I recognized from yesterday, Claire Solot. Your microphone is available?
Good morning, Claire Solot, Legal Services Funders Network and the Bigglesworth Family Foundation. First, I'd like to thank the board for approving the provisional license recommendation yesterday so that it can move forward to the Supreme Court for consideration. And related to that, I'm hoping that the board can put out some sort of public notice, updating people on the status and an expectation in terms of when applications might be available. As many of you know, Legal Service Funders Network runs the largest post-grad law fellowship for recent grads in the Bay Area. We have over 30 grads that have been placed at over 20 legal service organizations. Many of them have asked if they can participate in the provisional license program and are eager to be able to make a decision in terms of whether they'll be taking the October bar exam. As you know, the experience of new grads as compared to those asking for retroactivity is quite different. And we're simply hoping to be able to give these new grads clarity as to whether it's imperative that they take the bar exam, take time off from their fellowships, or whether it's a better path for them right now based on their circumstances to continue in their fellowships, increasing access to justice and capacity at legal service organizations. I'm also working on public-private funding partnerships right now to continue these programs. So clarity about the availability is imperative so that we can make sure that there are funds available for legal service organizations and public interest organizations to be able to hire these fellows as legal service provisional licensed lawyers. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our final request to make public comment is coming from RMC. Are the initials that I see there? And once you have a microphone available to you, RMC. Doing that right now. Your microphone's available and it's now unmuted. You have three minutes.
Hi, good morning. So you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you for taking public comment. Again, I'm going to repeat, you know, what many other people have said in terms of the issues with Examsoft. I'm an examiner ready to take the October bar. I don't think that there's a lot of confidence in Examsoft currently. I've been one of the many people who've experienced lag times in typing, multiple attempts to download that haven't worked. And each time I've tried to contact Examsoft, I've waited at least 30 minutes, sometimes an hour, I've been hung up on. I think the larger issue is that this exam will not be a success if anybody is failed because of technical issues. And Examsoft itself has said that there are likely to be 2.5% of examinees that have some sort of technical issue. And I think that in and of itself should give us all pause, particularly because we bear the risks, you don't. In addition, I think that, you know, this is sort of more a logistical issue, but the PT, the PT is just ridiculous. We have a two-inch window to write our PT in which you cannot even see the entirety of your answer. As the earlier person commented about having to go back and forth. You know, and y'all may say, things get thrown at you as attorneys and you've got to be able to deal with it. And while that is true, this is not reflective of what practice will be like. And it is a large obstacle that we have to work against without any sort of additional time on the PT. I mean, I think that that's minor compared to the larger issues that I'm trying to address in terms of Examsoft. And so I would say, you know, echoing what a lot of other people have said in addition is that the only fair and equitable way to move forward with this and to ensure that we all have an equal playing field and access to success is open book. And again, it is not an easy feat to take the bar exam even with a book next to you. If you have to look things up too much, you're not prepared. So I really, really.
30 seconds left, thank you.
Thank you. I really urge you to consider this because doing that now, taking that proactive step could also save y'all a lot of headache and a lot of work if things don't go well with the exam and you have even 20 examinees who are failed because they simply couldn't get into the software. And I think that that's something you should seriously consider. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our public comment session.
All right. Thank you, Dag, and thank you to our public commenters. The next item on our agenda is the executive director's report. Donna.
I do not have a report today as I did my, my report yesterday.
All right, thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Does any member wish to, we have just one item on the consent agenda, but does anyone wish to pull it off for discussion? And if not, I'll ask Sarah to take the role.
Excuse me, Sean, but you have a couple of items under the chair's report. The first is approval of the board committee.
Oh.
And the second is.
Thank you. You know, it didn't print out on my copy of the agenda.
I can share it.
No, I remember, it's fine. Let's take up first the item 30 dash one, approval of board committee liaison and special assignments. Because we have the happy occasion of a new board member joining us this week, I am going to propose some slight modifications to the slate of appointments in front of you in the written agenda item. So I am going to ask you to approve that Arnie Sewell be appointed to the Regulation Discipline Committee, to the Finance Committee, and as one of our Legislative Relations and Communications Liaisons in place of Ruben. Ruben as vice chair will be involved in those functions along with me on a regular basis. And we are very glad to be able to take advantage of Arnie's expertise and experience in that liaison role. So Sarah is now indicating that change for you on the screen. And she's already made the changes on, to Regulation and Discipline Committee and the Finance Committee. So with that change, I would invite a motion to approve these assignments.
This is Jose, I'll move the motion.
Sonia here to seconding.
Thank you. Unless there's any discussion, let's proceed to a roll call.
Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Liz Narrows.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Gannon.
Yes.
Pertula.
Yes.
Sewell.
Yes.
Darling.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll next take up item 30 dash two, which is informational only. It's our multi-year schedule of Board of Trustees meetings. Make sure and put those in your calendars. And let's return then to the consent agenda. There's one item, annual approval of secretary. Unless anyone would like to take it off consent for discussion, I'll ask Sarah to take the roll call to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, we do need a motion in a second.
I'm moving. I'll move. I'll second. Whoever, yeah, that's right.
Okay, so I have Dela Cruz moving and Duran seconding, seconding. Broughton.
Yes.
Chen.
Yes.
Liz Narrows.
Hi.
Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Gannon.
Yes.
Pertula.
Yes.
Sewell.
Yes.
Darling.
Yes.
The consent calendar is moved.
Thank you. We'll next take up item 701, the Strategic Plan Report from our interim executive director, Donna Hershkowitz.
I'm just going to be sharing my screen here. Can you confirm that you can see the front page of the PowerPoint?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. In January of this year, among other things that I said I wanted to accomplish over the course of the, the year, was a retooling of the strategic plan, not substantively, but organizationally. As we discussed at the time, in my view, the state bar's five-year strategic plan is part strategic plan, part operational plan, and maybe even part tactical plan. Unfortunately, the changing face of the world since January forced me to deprioritize this effort. And as the plan runs only through January 2022, it doesn't make sense to undertake the effort at this stage. Regardless, as we come into, as we come into the final 12, 15 or so months of the, of the plan, I wanted to take the opportunity to update you on our overall progress. Let's get this moving here. I have catalogued each of the objectives as complete or still in progress. Sometimes I have to admit, it's a judgment call. There are, there are some items that, and I'll talk about a few of them as we go through this, some, some items that really are more ongoing in nature. And so they may never be complete. And so I had to make a judgment call on which category to put them in. And some of the items, I just want to remind you, were just added in January or March of 2020. And so then still being in progress does not reflect a failure to quickly act on the board's initiatives. So first, a high-level tally here. We have completed all three of the objectives of goal one. And I'll be going through these and just in, on the following slides. Completed eight of the 16 of the objectives of goal two, eight of the 12 objectives of goal three, and nine of the 17 objectives set forth in goal four and all of the objectives in goal five. Goal one. Let's, starting with what we've completed. Not to worry, I don't plan to read through each goal and objective, but just give you the highlights here. Goal one was focused on our transition to a primarily regulatory agency following the offloading of our trade associational functions. This encompassed working with CLA and then the incredible amount of work done to implement the now infamous appendix I. All of the, the objectives of goal one were completed. Goal two is broken down into three component parts. These were objectives related to a fair, timely, and appropriately resourced attorney discipline system and admission system and appropriately enforcing our obligations related to the unauthorized practice of law. So if you look at the second objective that I've highlighted as completed in, on this screen, supporting adequate funding for the client security fund. This is an example of the kind of objection which could be characterized as completed or in progress, frankly. Maybe it is best characterized as ongoing. As you know, for 2020, we secured a significant increase in funding from the licensing fees for the client security fund, increasing the available funding for distribution by over $5 million. In 2018, we allocated some funding from LAP reserves and redefined the CSF Client Security Fund Reserve Policy to increase the funding for that year by an additional $3 million. I'm just going to sort of scroll through those objectives from goal two, which have been completed for you to peruse. And then we'll move on to goal three. If you have any questions on any of these items here in goal two, of course, please feel free to stop me. Goal, goal three is also broken down into multiple parts. The component parts of goal three included objectives related to employee engagement, financial management, information technology, and management of other assets. Again, I am not going to go through the items here that work, the objectives that were completed. Scroll through a couple of screens here. If you have any questions, please stop me. The item here on pursuing a two-year fee bill is also one of those items that, that may be ongoing in nature. Certainly something that, that the state bar has worked toward over, over the entirety of the strategic, the, the, the length of the strategic plan. It is not yet something that has been achieved, that there were recommendations on a multi-year fee bill that were provided by the state auditor in its report issued in April of 2019. Moving on to goal four. Goal four relates to access to justice and diversity and inclusion in the legal profession. The vast majority of objectives for goal four were added in 2019. Prior to that, as I recall, there were only two objectives that were listed and now there are 17. Prior to that, as I recall, there were only two objectives that were listed, and now there are seventeen. Goal four is broken into two component parts, objectives related to access to justice, and, and objectives related to diversity and inclusion in the legal profession, highlighting just a couple of the completed, actually just one of the completed objectives here. Let me point you to one on the top of this slide, by December thirty-one, twenty twenty, adopt revised rules to modify the elimination of bias MCL requirements. With your approval of the proposed rules at yesterday's board meeting, we have now officially completed that requirement. I do also want to mention the, the next, the next objective here, to develop and publish an annual report card on the state of the profession. We did not make the January thirty-one date that, but that report card was published just a few months ago. Following the report card, we had a, the publishing the report card, we had a diversity summit with the private sector. We had about fifty or sixty participants on that summit, following up on the information that was reported in that report card. And we will have a summit in December with the public sector, with the nonprofit sector, also looking at the statistics from that report card as it relates to the public sector, the nonprofit sector, and brainstorming how we can improve diversity and inclusion in the legal profession in that sector in particular. And then moving on. Screen is a little slow today. Goal five, dealing with informing and educating stakeholders about the state bar's initiatives, responsibilities, and resources. And I've indicated that all of these objectives have been completed. So my plan is to move forward then to those items that are still in progress. So, so this is one of the objectives, objective A from goal two. Much of this goal was actually just adopted at the January twenty twenty planning session. And we, we talked about some of the, these items yesterday as we were looking, hearing the report from the Office of Research and Institutional Accountability on some of the research that has been done on the attorney discipline system. Other pieces of this still need to be completed, including the updated workload study for OCTC. And that workload study will be broader than just OCTC, we'll be looking at, including the State Bar Court in that as well as we had in the prior workload study. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these objectives which are still in progress, but just touch on some of them. The top one on this slide, and to begin auditing attorney compliance with MCL requirements in the most cost-effective and efficient manner no later than December thirty-one, twenty twenty, I am happy to say that this is on track. You adopted a new rule some time ago that would, that would require MCL providers to upload to the state bar attorney attendance information at MCL events. And we have, we have in fact done a soft launch of a new, of that new automated system that would have the MCL providers upload that attendance information. By having that information, we will be able to do one hundred percent auditing as opposed to the one, one to ten percent random auditing that we've done in past years. We are on track to launch this program to all MCL providers by the end of the year. The last item objective on this page, no later than January one, twenty nineteen, require all attorneys to report firm size and practice type to, to the state bar and maintain and update that information. For those continuing members of the bar, of the board, that should sound familiar to you. You spent a few meetings, as a matter of fact, discussing the rules surround, rules surrounding this objective to report firm size and practice type. And in fact, we had expanded the assignment to look more comprehensively at the data we collect, the data we post on the attorney profile, and that we require attorneys to update and maintain on an ongoing basis. You did adopt the rules that would, that would put all of this in place. What is still lagging behind that, however, is the automation. And that it has been slated on the, the IT pipeline. We're looking at twenty twenty-one to, to, had to automate those pieces, and then that item will be complete. One item that I did want to point your attention to on this slide. After the results of the February twenty nineteen bar exam are published, we are, we were to evaluate the results of the two-day exam on the pass rates, on the pass rates and costs. This, this objective was divided into two pieces. The Office of Admissions studied the, evaluated the results of the pass rate, of the two-day exam on pass rates. A, a report was presented to the Committee of Bar Examiners, and I believe, I believe it was last December. But we faced delays on the piece of it of presenting a report on the evaluation of the costs. I believe we anticipate bringing that report to the Committee of Bar Examiners in December and then closing the loop with the board on this objective. And then the final in-progress objective under goal two, conducting California-specific job analysis, as you all know and heard repeatedly from staff, and that job analysis is complete. The report of that job analysis, as well as other items, was part of the, the reason that the board and the Supreme Court launched a joint Blue Ribbon Commission on the future of the bar exam. The one reason I left this item as, as the, the one thing that's, that is not complete on this item is conducting the new content validation study. Because that would have been the next step following a California-specific job analysis to look at the bar exam and determine if the bar exam needs to be changed based on that analysis. We've sort of jumped that, that, that part of the study, moving directly to the Blue Ribbon Commission, which really will be looking at new content for, for the bar exam. So I guess I could equally have put this as a completed item. Moving on to goal three, looking again at items that are, objectives that are still in progress. And again, here, the first objective that I've listed on this slide is one that we have done quite a lot with, but I would never mark it as done. This is, this is an ongoing, an ongoing important piece of employee engagement to ensure performance accountability, to always look toward professional development at our staff, to provide new and greater opportunities for professional development, to continue to do, to performance manage and ensure that we are providing appropriate feedback to staff. So I, this is something I would, I would never mark as done. We are, as, with regard to the particular objective that you see on the screen now, one of the pieces that I just wanted to mention on this was the upgrading the, the infrastructure as it relates to desktops. That is, we're no longer doing desktops, we're launching laptops for all state bar employees as a result of the likelihood of continued working from home for at least some members of state bar staff for a considerable amount of time in the future. And we are, we will be rolling that out, starting in the next week or so, I believe, we'll be rolling out the launch of the updated equipment, for those who have equipment that is older than, than a specified number of years. Goal four, supporting access for, access to legal services and the increasing the diversity and inclusion in the legal profession. Just again, a couple of items here that, that are left still in progress. The second objective that's noted here on the slide, this really was as constructed, it was describing the work of Adels, which, as you know, is complete. But it also seems to cover the work of the Closing the Justice Gap Working Group that you heard about yesterday, which has not yet begun, and that's why I left this as an uncompleted objective. Obviously, the work of that Closing the Justice Gap Working Group will not be, is not intended to be complete before January twenty twenty-two, and so that piece will need to be continuing into the following strategic plan. And then just to the last two objectives that are listed on this slide, supporting public, public education about key problems not recognized as legal issues. This is one of the things that we've talked about that contributes to the justice gap, that individuals have problems that they don't even recognize to be legal problems, and so they're not seeking legal help for those, for those problems. And then the following bullet, the following objective, supporting effort to attract and retain lawyers in legal aid organizations. Both of these last two objectives emanated from our work with the, with the Justice Gap Study and were added to the strategic plan in, at the January planning session. And so again, the, the fact that these are not completed represents only that they are newly added objectives and not any dilatory behavior on the part of the state bar. And with that, that is the, that is your update on the strategic plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, Ruben.
Thank you. Donna, thank you for the comprehensive report. I have, I guess, just a couple of comments on the goals achieved and then a question on one of the in-progress. Two of the things that struck out, that stuck out to me that I wanted to say particular thank yous for and congratulations on the completed goals. The first is the successful implementation of communication strategies related to UPL unauthorized practice of law. I know that is a big undertaking, and, and I feel like staff was innovative and persistent in their efforts to reach out to those affected communities and to try and address the problem. I know it's a, it's, it's not going to go away ever as a problem, but certainly I feel like we made some meaningful efforts to chip away at that problem. The second was on the toolkit issues with the judicial council. There again, extremely important issues, and I appreciate the work that has been done, and I think it'll produce some good results moving forward. On the question, the question that I have relates to your comment on the MCL auditing.
Yes.
I think I heard you say that we, we've shifted now from the ten percent random auditing to the ability to do one hundred percent auditing on MCL compliance. Is that correct?
That is the, that is the shift that will be happening. So up until today, or still currently, the attorneys at the end of their three-year MCL compliance period report whether or not they're in compliance, and they, i.e. whether they've met the twenty-five hours, the, and the specific hour requirements for legal ethics competence and elimination of bias. They, they, it's a checkmark that attorneys enter into their, my state bar profile. What we have switched to is a system where the MCL providers, who were required currently to maintain a list of those who attend their events, we've, we've instead said to, that, that the MCL providers will be uploading that information to the state bar system. It will be shown on each attorney's attorney profile, and so they will have a list in front of them of all of the courses that, that they take after, once the system is launched. And that will give them a good tool to know if they are, if they are on track to complete their MCL requirements, and it will give us the ability, because we will know what courses they have taken, to be able to audit all of the, of the attorneys in the, in the compliance group. Right now, we do a random sample of between one and ten percent of the attorneys who were in the compliance group. We reach out to them, we ask them to provide their certificates of attendance. In the MCL courses, we add, add up the credits and make sure that they have completed their, all of the requirements and the requirements in the special areas. Because it will be online, we will not need to do it that way. There will be a ramp-up period, because for example, you know, people who report next year, there may just be a few of their hours that are included at the end of, at the end of, by the end of January thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. And so we'll still need to audit. If we're doing an audit, we're not going to have a hundred percent, really through the end of a, a three-year cycle, will all of the courses be loaded onto the system?
One follow-up question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
The individual data per attorney that will be available on the website, is that, is that information available to the public as well, or just to the attorney in their state bar, my state bar profile?
Is this on the firm size and, and other data elements?
No, no, on the MCL compliance.
It is just, I, I'm sorry, it's just available to the, the attorney, it, it won't be displayed to, to the public.
Thank you.
Chair, can I make a comment?
Right. Yes, please.
Yeah, this is Juan. So Donna, first and foremost, I don't think we say this enough. Thank you for you and the entire state bar staff, for all the hard work that I can imagine, well, I can't imagine, shifting to virtually and doing everything to continue to align with our strategic plan. I think you're doing a, a great job. So I just wanted to acknowledge, take the time to thank you and thank, and thank everyone from the state bar and continue to support, you know, the mission and vision of the state bar board and what you're all doing. So I just wanted to take that time and say thank you.
On behalf of all the state bar staff, thank you for this.
Thank you, Juan. Any other discussion, comments, questions?
So Sean, this is Hyland. If I could, I echo that, those thanks, Donna. This is an incredible amount of work. I wanted to go back to your comment, a comment that you made at the outset, which is that this strategic document, strategic plan is sort of a mix of strategic items as well as operational items. Which, you know, given the state bar's shift to being a purely regulatory entity, I think some of the operational items were necessary as part of that shift. You know, based on your experience in, in leading this, do you think it would be useful for the state bar to, you know, I'm looking forward to the January strategic planning session that we're going to have as a board, to revisit you know, dividing out operations from strategy and to take a hard look at how can we make this more strategic and break out the operational items?
So, so I, I think that, that there will be an opportunity to talk about, and maybe that's sort of, sort of a cleaner way to think of it than I was actually thinking about it. But I think that one of the things that we'll want to do in the January planning session is really look at what is, what is feasible to get done for the last twelve months of the strategic plan. And when you look at all of the items that are arguably not yet completed in progress or ongoing, it, it's, it feels like a lot. But you're absolutely right. Some of these items are just ongoing operational issues, which, which, as I said, I, I don't believe belong necessarily in a strategic plan. And so one way to address that would be to take those off of the plan, make crystal clear that the board and the bar leadership is not minimizing the importance of those, but understanding that they are not strategic plan items. Take those out and have a focus on the more strategic items. Because it will be the last twelve months of the plan. Because it will be the last 12 months of the plan, doing an overarching sort of revisiting to what the plan looks like is probably not beneficial. But I definitely suggest for the 2022 planning session, when we are creating the next five-year strategic plan, we really think long and hard about, about the strategic objectives and placing those in the plan and then having staff develop operational plans, annual operational plans on how they will be implementing the strategic objectives that are set forth in the plan. That will also result in us not updating the strategic plan as often as we seem to. In my reading, it seems that strategic plans are rarely amended during their, their existence. Their three-year, five-year plans that really just set a high-level framework, important ambitious goals for the agency. But then it would be the operational plans which really dictate how we, what, what operational objectives we will engage in to, to achieve those high-level strategic goals. So that would be for 2022 planning session, I strongly encourage us to do that.
Great, thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I join in the thanks to Donna and our staff. And we'll, Donna, I don't think there's any request action on this item.
There is not.
Information and discussion? Okay, great. Then we'll move on to item 702.
One year, I'll figure out, one year I'll figure out how to make this strategic plan update more exciting, but I haven't gotten.
Maybe some animations, remember you had the jumping little doughboy type thing once? All right, Office of Finance, mid-year budget variance report and projection. Our Chief Financial Officer, John Adams, will present that.
All right, good, good morning, Board Chair. I have hopefully an exciting presentation, no animation though. This item 702 is the mid-year projection, which I have just about a dozen slides. Now, this presentation and the, the report is required by the board book set out in 5.21 of the board book that requires an annual review at mid-year and variance analysis. Certainly prepared by the office, but when variances come up, we do work with offices to try to identify those and understand those variances for the board. The, the report does have a couple of attachments. One or two is the variances over 100,000 for both revenues and expenses. Now, these numbers and for those new members of the board, the state bar is on a fiscal, a fiscal year that's January through December. So these numbers are as of June 30th, which is our mid-year, the first six months of the year. And then I did present this to the finance committee at their meeting on September 8th. I talked about this, there is a attachment A is a fund summary that shows you very high level for all of the state bar funds with not just what the budgeted revenues and expenditures are, but with what the projections are and then what the projected ending reserves are for each of the various funds. So just a few highlights, you know, in some cases, funds are in good shape based on their specific purposes. There are a few highlights and I'll cover that as we go through. Legal Services Fund, which is hopefully, hopefully my PowerPoint's still on. IOTA is interest on legal lawyers trust accounts. That because of interest rates has declined or is projected to be 16 million less this year, which will have future impacts on providing grants to legal, legal aid providers. One of the good things with the state budget is the approval of 31 million in a grant for homeless prevention that we anticipate this year that will hopefully be spent within the next 12 months. And then just quickly on the admissions fund. Very difficult at this point to project how the admissions fund will ultimately end for the year. With the online, there was prior to the online and, and decisions by the Supreme Court, there was a huge amount of applicants. I think normally those that take the tests is between 8,000 and 9,000. My understanding from the admissions office is before the deadline, there was over 12,000 applicants. Of course, some of those will decide to request refunds and those were available through September 8th. The admissions office is working very hard to process those, those refunds. And, and with that information at the third quarter, which is at the end of this month, we should have a little better sense of where admissions fund is going to end. For those, when the board adopted the budget, the admissions fund was using reserves, one for some one-time costs related to aims and then some just for other operational needs. Right now, we're projecting that they may be a little closer to break even, but again, too early to tell. So this is maybe a little difficult to read online. This was in the report, this is attachment A, this does show you the summary. We usually focus a lot on the general fund, that is where 75, 80% of the staff is funded. That is the main fund for discipline and regulating attorneys. With that admissions fund, and just, I'll cover the general fund a little more in detail. The board did adopt a budget that had a deficit of 1.3 million for the general fund. That was for one-time costs related to CMS and phase two of improving the case management system for both OCTC and the courts. In looking through, there are some funds that are doing some spend down. Bank Settlement Fund is a good example for client security. We got the additional $40 this year, so they have increased payments compared to prior years. But they're usually, the, the balances that will be left in that fund will be based on how much comes in and then the payments that are made out. You see the Equal Access Fund, the 29.9 million is the projected variance. That is roughly related to the, the anticipation of the homeless grant. I mentioned the legal services, that's the 13.5. So those are really the highlights for the, at a very high level for all the funds. General Fund highlights, this is something we spent a lot more time on, really focusing on the general fund. The budget adopted growth in active, in active fee, active licenses at about 0.5%. So about 190,000 is roughly an increase of 1,000. What actually has occurred through, I believe it was through the May numbers, was only a 0.1% increase in active licenses. So that had a, an impact between 500 and 600,000 dollars. The other thing that's really interesting, and I think we, we didn't know what the impact would be and we didn't, we didn't necessarily adjust accordingly. But scaling with the approval of the fee bill, the fee bill had scaling prior at 40,000, hadn't been changed for 20 years. Part of the fee bill for 2020 increased that amount, the scaling of 25% of a reduction in the licensing fee for those that are making under $64,000. So last year, the fee scaling, we had a total of 9,800. In this year, 12,300. So, you know, an increase there and you can see the impact was about 300,000 for, for that. Other things I'll talk a little more about, interest income with the declining rates. We anticipate a $400,000 decrease right now. Mr. Mazur yesterday talked about rental income. We've been very fortunate that the impacts on that revenue source has been minor in compared to maybe other landlords, which is again about 200,000, less than 5%. Personnel cost savings, 2.6% or 2.6 million dollars seems to be a lot of money. But again, our, our annual budget on salaries and benefits is close to 100 million dollars. It's about a 3% savings. We do anticipate some vacancies throughout the year. I think the vacancies were a little higher, at least in the first six months. Staffing has over, certainly over the last three months has built up. OCTC is getting closer to being fully staffed and they're, they've been very, working very hard to that. But at least in the first six months, we can count on this 2.6 million dollars in savings. And then travel, as we all know, no traveling has really been occurring for the state bar since March. And so at least one of the benefits for the state bar is savings of about 0.700,000. And this is not just staff that travel back and forth between LA and San Francisco, but all the volunteers and all the people who, who support the state bar. So just quickly, at the general fund level, total budget was 94 million dollars. Our projection based on those reductions is 91.3 million dollars, a variance of almost 2.8 million dollars. With that, there is the other side of the equation. Oh, let me, before I go into expenditures, let me talk about attorney licensees, license counts. So this graph, I just wanted to show you that, show you the numbers between 2019 and 2020. You can see 180,000 with a, with a very slight increase up to 189,800. I think I highlighted this is inactives and especially those over 70 as baby boomers are leaving the profession and being inactive. And they don't pay fees, once you hit 70 years old, you don't pay the fee. So last year it was 23,000, this year at this point was 26, or right now it's 26,000. So those are individuals that are inactive but not paying fees over because they're over 70. And then one of the questions that came up and with sort of the recession related to COVID and the impacts on licensees, I was asked to sort of look at how licenses change during the recession from 2008 to 2011. You can see on this that license counts actually increased, revenues continue to increase, overall growth of about 2%, 2.2% each year. So it, not something that actually had an, an impact during the recession as far as licensees. I think the, the impact on licensee going forward are simply the baby boomers leaving the, the profession. General Fund expenses, I was going to talk about the other side of the equation, expenses. I did mention personnel cost was really the single highest area of savings. Overall, we anticipate about a 3.8 million dollar savings for this year within the general fund. The savings in the general fund will offset the revenue reductions, which is a good thing for this year and actually reduce what the impacts are on reserves that we actually anticipate at the beginning of the year. And then this is just to show you what the adopted budget had related to projections. And then with the year completing, having a better sense of where reserves are, shows you that we thought that we started the year with a higher reserve balance, which, once the audit was completed in May, that number of 12.6 was the final number for last year. We anticipated as part of the budget process, 15.3%, which gives us about 16% as of a reserve. Our target is 17%, so we thought we were in fairly good shape at that point. You can see in the projection, we're projecting a 13% reserve. I talked yesterday about the refinancing and the return of the 4.6 million dollars. That is not as part of this calculation. So once that returns, I would anticipate reserves to be higher than are actually shown based on, on the current projections that we had earlier. And then just the, the quick variance on both revenues and expenses. I talked about the deficit, we had one-time expenditures for CMS planned this year. That's the 1.3, what we're projecting is only 200,000 dollars in use of reserves for this year. And just COVID impacts, I, I think I talked about the decreases in revenues. These are really the areas, at least initially the short term. And then long-term, certainly Steve talked about leasing rates yesterday and renewals that will be coming up and how that will impact leasing revenues. Voluntary fees and fee scaling, certainly we saw some fee scaling, not because of COVID, but just because of the increase from 40 to 64. We're not sure what it will be next year, but certainly there will be impacts for those attorneys that made under 64,000 this year. And then just long-term pension and retiree costs. CalPERS did not meet their 7.25% or 7.125% anticipate return, return for this past year. So that's going to have some impacts going forward, which we'll see in a couple of years. And I won't go into this, this just shows you really those five categories and what the impacts are. Trust fund revenue, which is the bottom one. Again, this is the IOTA funding that is used for legal services, a pretty significant impact. Now, they have some reserves and, and will be using those over the next couple of years. But if the Fed rate stays at where it is for any long period of time, this will have a longer-term impact. Just for the benefit of the board, the, the established compliance rate last year in April was 1.7%. Banks like Wells Fargo, who have a billion dollars in, in trust funds, were paying that money. Now it's 0.68%. And then that sort of concludes my presentation, certainly open for any questions. Here's the resolution. And that's my final presentation, so.
Thank you, John. Discussion or questions? Josh?
Yeah, just a real quick one, John. I heard you say that the interest reserve that's going to be returned on the restructuring of the debt that we approved yesterday is not in any of the calculations. I think if I remember from yesterday, there was a debt payment savings. Is that in the calculations or is the, none of it's in it?
None of, so there will be, we'll be paying less interest, but it's only for, it's only for the, you know, 60 days or so. So that, that we didn't, not to say it's marginal, but we just didn't include in the projection. But I think your bigger point, Josh, is the 4.6 million that is not included in this, in, in this, in this, in this slide and that will be returned. Now, revenues and expenses, and it's hard to explain, but revenues and expenses don't necessarily have a one-for-one impact on our reserves because of the way we define our reserves. So it's a little early to say, but certainly a large portion of that 4.6 million will be put back in and be available to support the state bar and to, and to meet that reserve of that 17%. Other questions?
Sean, it's Sonia Dillon.
Yeah.
Hi, thank you. First, I just want to express my gratitude to, to John Adams. We came on board at the same time. And so I just want to thank you for being responsive to our inquiries and, and clarifications. It has been a challenging time because of not only of COVID-19, which came today, this, this year, but we do have, we did have the, the fee increase and technology also, us being part of that with challenges of payroll not being, you know, there at that time, in a timely manner. So I just want to thank John and his team for helping us with the budget for, and the finance of, the health of the finance of the state bar and working with our auditors and, and through the, the COVID-19. Thank you, John, and good luck with your new ventures endeavors.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Jose?
Oh. No, yeah, thank you. I actually don't have any questions, I'd like to join Sonia in expressing our gratitude for this great work. And if there's no other discussion, I will make a motion on the resolution.
Thank you.
And Sonia would like to second it.
Just, just a comment, I, I've enjoyed my time here, it's been amazing. And Sonia, as you said, we came in about the same time. I've learned a lot from all of you, I've enjoyed certainly working with the chairs of the Audit and Finance Committee and the committees and it's just, you know, thinking about all the work that's happened over the last two years, just had a great time and, you know, I think the state bar has always been on the right path and it's just been great the last two years. So I appreciate all your, all your insights and feedback and support, so thank you. Sean dropped? Sean dropped.
Oh.
Ruben, what are you doing?
Looks like we lost Sean, I'm sorry. We've got a motion on the table to approve the resolution as presented. With a second, are there any changes to the motion? Okay, Sarah, if you'll take the role.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Snaros?
Aye.
Delacros?
Yes.
Dillon?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Gano?
Yes.
Pertula?
Yes.
Zowol?
Yes.
Stallings?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right. Ruben, thank you for stepping in. I had some problem. I had to switch to my internet. Sarah, are you able to hear me now?
Yes, I think open session is concluded.
I think it is. So now we're going to move into closed session. Trustees, check your email for the link. We'll be handling item 7001 pursuant to Government Code Section 11126 subdivision E2C and item 70, 7002 pursuant to Government Code Section 11126 subdivision E1. All right, we'll see you in closed.